During the play.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Uh, first item on our agenda would be the approval of the November 7th minutes.
I move to agree.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve these minutes as submitted. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Approval of the agenda, any additions to the agenda?
I will move to approve the agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. First item up is Mr. Gunderson. We have a couple of light bulb bills.
Yeah, well, yeah. Got a couple estimates on a thousand, um, four-foot LED bulbs. And, um, all you gotta do is just swap them out. And, um, and see that C, the, uh, electrician electric had an estimate of eighty-one forty. Johnson, Gary Johnson was ninety-eight, ninety-five, so.
You don't know if Gary, uh, inadvertently put in the labor there installing, do you?
No, he, I told him I do it.
Okay. So. Questions on the bids for LED lights? Think a thousand's gonna be enough?
It'll do the three floors.
Okay.
And we'll just save these for softening out of other ones.
Sure. Well. I don't know where you talked to, see, it's been a big savings in.
Electric, yep.
Yep, so. Need a motion to approve the, uh, bids for LED bulbs?
So.
Proving the lowest, lower.
Yeah, the lowest, yeah. Electrician electric.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid for electrician electric for the LED bulbs. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Mr. Jaker. Thank you, Roger.
Good evening, everybody. Um, kinda wanna touch base on access control first. Uh, I believe it's in your packets. It's an ID badge maker. I know this has been a topic of, of discussion for years prior to me being here. I got a bid on one, and this was the one that came highly recommended. Uh, it's, uh, it's a company, and it was the closest distributor for us. And it came at seventy-two, sixty-nine, ninety-five. And I'm asking for, if I could spend my budget on this to benefit the corporations. So this would operate door locks, setting all that. We're, so unfortunately, it's taken a little bit of time to get all this process information. But yeah, the idea, the general idea is having our ID as well as opening door accesses. So they're sending us cards to see if their card system and this card system is, um, compatible with our current door operations. Just one of the nice things that we could have, um, you know, like proposed jury selection stuff is actual physical cards. And then since our stairwell, store, stairwells are locked, that they could actually access the stairwells to get upstairs during jury trial and stuff. Because currently, they have to have someone physically hold doors.
So they'd have temporary gift cards for jurors.
That's the idea anyway.
I have a question, Chris.
Yes, sir.
So, the bid, does that include actual IDs for every county employee?
Or the cards are in there?
To be precise. Because there are people who don't work for the county in the building as well. They get a card as well.
Well, if we were to do that, I mean, we could probably sell something out. Like your, your office is kind of where you're going with certain people in your office, you'd say?
Uh, no, but the therefore in general.
Sure.
Right, so are we gonna distinguish, like, county employee is green, state employee is purple, or something like that?
So the software that comes with it, you can design whatever our design's gonna be. Um, we can probably work something out that way. At least it's visually easily identifiable.
So it's possible as far as you're saying?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm just asking, because I know we have a lot of other partners in the building who aren't, you know, county employees. And if we're gonna replace the old key card system, I don't wanna mess with their contracts with us.
Correct.
So let's say.
Yeah.
So thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, some stuff we have to defend. I want to.
Absolutely. Would you be able to make just ID cards of the deputies?
Yes, sir. That was kind of the general idea. Uh, that way too, if you go to a motel and they want you to, you know, definitively prove that you're a county employee, you get a, you say a benefit, like a discount, there's your ID.
So what happens if it doesn't work with the lock system?
Um, they say they have a workaround, um, where you have to get to that bridge, I think, once we get to there.
Could we make the approval of the bid contingent on working with our existing lock system?
I would say that's reasonable.
Would that be a reasonable expectation?
Yeah, we need to approve it and then have to spend twenty grand or something to change out the electronic locks.
I totally understand that, a hundred percent.
But, but Chris is absolutely right. This is something that's been wanted and needed in the building for, I wanna say twenty years. But, you know, since, you know, picture IDs came into play years and years ago. Um, and they've just, for some reason, gotten put on the back burner. And, uh, so I appreciate Chris taking the initiative to bring this forward and be willing to, um, accept this out of his budget. But I don't know if that's necessarily the way we wanna go unless we.
So I was, I was gonna ask, how does that, what are you gonna take that out of your budget?
Um.
With, or what?
What, my item?
Yeah.
Probably other radios.
Does that, does that set you back then for what you gotta have for your radios?
Currently, right now, I'm gonna be long because they keep pressing siren back just a little bit. So I knew I have a little bit of a budget at the end of this year. So that was kind of the, the reason behind it. Um, the, actually, the bigger thing was we took this out for our grant to update some of our security and access control measures in the building. And all of a sudden, we overran that. Of course, all, everything became extremely expensive. And really, it was just kind of a, a bad deal. But we cut this completely out because we knew we could, just to cover the cameras and the, the door stuff, so. Any other questions we can maybe answer on that?
I go ahead with the, with the approval, or you want more time to?
I would make a motion to approve this quote contingent upon it working with our existing door lock system.
And I should have those keys here next week sometime. So I'll be able to send you guys an email. Oh, that might be the keys. That actually, that might be the keys.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the, uh, and bid the, the electronic dual-sided ID cards contingent on working with our current electronic key fob system. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you, Chris.
Well, thank you, guys. Onto the next, um, so switching gears on the UAS drone stuff. Uh, we currently are really struggling with, we have a real, a larger one and a smaller one. So we need. That's odd, isn't it? Well, we'll continue on. Um, so we're looking at the middle of the road one. Uh, this is the one in front of you guys, it's kind of the one that is, the one that's kind of gonna put the build for the time being. Fully loaded, fully capable of getting out there and actually staying out there. You need to go? No, no. Pass that back. Um, sorry, collect the, get this collected back. Um, so it's an M thirty, it's a mid-class, currently fully out, they can actually collect them in. It's really, but it's killer battery, it's really fast operating. So this one's supposedly a lot better, and it's on a larger sided, sided one where it's just a battery. Um, this one is actually, we kind of went for like a search and rescue or the call-out stuff, so it's a spotlight, you know, broadcast system, it's two-way broadcasting, so. And including a drop system, so I kind of did a thirteen seven, I'm just asking if we can, uh, spend that money from that budget on that as well.
Questions on the proposal for drone?
So this is kind of your main drone then at that point?
It'll become more of a main drone than a, than one that's basically, oh, go fuck. Everyone's calling me. I got both phones ringing. It will be kind of a main one now, it'll fill that gap.
No training or anything needed with this one?
I think one of the biggest issues he's running into is when we have him out, the little one, if it's windy, it ain't big enough. Then when you put the big one up, it just, it takes so much battery to run them, that they're up and down all the time, and they just run on the battery. Where this one falls ready, we give more airtime and it's their better purpose more in there than going up and down.
So it's, uh, five forty-five. Um, we need to start the foreclosure sale, um, at the time. Um, sorry, Chris.
Over.
Okay. So with that, uh, five forty-five, um, making sure all present, people are present to bid, have filled out the paperwork in the hallway, have a bid number. Bid numbers to be returned to auditor's office when the sale is completed. Make sure all people are familiar with the terms of the sale. Terms of the sale have been printed and distributed with everybody. Hope everybody's familiar with that. Raising bids will be done by a minimum of a dollar, no sets. Uh, successful bidders will report to the auditor's office to pay and complete paperwork. Any questions? With that, uh, we'll start with the first item on our, um, our closure sale. The Ontario Township. Lot five, block four, south of the town site. Um, value of fifty-five dollars and ten cents. It's a vacant lot, do we have anybody bidding on that lot? Fifty-five, ten, Roger. Okay. Any further bids, anybody like to raise that bid amount? Fifty-five, ten. Fifty-five, ten going once. Fifty-five, ten going twice. Fifty-five, ten sold, uh, for fifty-five dollars and ten cents to bidder number two. Uh, next item on our, uh, list would be Church's Ferry, lot nine, block ten, for the amount of sixty-two dollars and fifteen cents. Anybody interested in bidding on the item in Church's Ferry? Anybody? If not, nobody bidding on that. Next item for bid would be City of Devil's Lake. Um, south forty-five of lots one and two of block eight. Uh, praise value of twenty-two hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Wait till we get that up on the screen. Kevin's running it, I thought maybe Steve was from the other office. Okay? So as Kevin's getting that up on the Perseverer. Um, again, it's the south forty-five of blocks one and two, it's block eight, City Devil's Lake. Two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Anybody we have a bid? And we wanna raise that? No? Anybody else, any other interested parties wanting to bid? Two thousand, two dollars, or two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Anybody else? Two thousand, two dollar, two hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents going once. Going twice. Sold for two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents to bidder number three. Okay. Next one would be Ramsey County Parcel, um, ease five feet, the south one hundred feet, lot sixteen, and lot seventeen of block eight. Be a vacant lot in the City Devil's Lake, I believe. Right there, anytime fitness. Uh, praise value of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Anybody like to open the bids on that? Anybody interested in bidding on that property? If not, uh, that property remains unsold. Moving on to the next item on our bid list would be lot four of block ten, or block forty. Lot four, block forty. So that, that one got sold, is one that on your list that you're looking at. What you gotta cross off?
We only did four times.
Yeah. So the, the lot nineteen one was, um, an individual came in and paid.
Yeah.
Paid that, so, uh, we go down to lot four, block forty. Um, starting bid would be two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars, twenty-eight cents. Lot four, block forty, on that Kevin? No one there? Okay. Anybody interested in purchasing, bidding on that piece of property? Lot four, block forty, anybody? Going once, going twice. No one interested, party's bidding on that property. Moving on to the City of Hampden. Lot eight, block one of Hampden City property, vacant lot, seventy-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Seventy-three dollars and eighty-six cents for lot eight, block one, Hampden City. Interested bidders? Anybody interested in bidding on the property in Hampden? Going once, going twice, last call. Remains unsold. Moving on to Lawton City. Lot five, block five. Appraised value of sixty-three dollars and fifty-two cents for lot five, block five, Lawton City. Anybody interested in bidding on that property? Lot five, or lot, yeah, lot five, block five, City of Lot. Going once, going twice, no bidders. Uh, next one would be lot nineteen, block five. Lawton City. Lot nineteen, block five, uh, praise value of five eighty-five, fifty-nine. Five eighty-five, fifty-nine. Anybody interested in purchasing that, bidding on that? Lot nineteen, block five. Going once, going twice. Lot nineteen, block five remains unsold. Moving down to lot nine, lot twenty, block five, City of Lawton. Same price, five eighty-five, fifty-nine. Five eighty-five, fifty-nine for Lawton, that twenty, block five, City of Lawton. Anybody interested in purchasing that? Going once, going twice, no bidders. Lot twenty-one, block five, City of Lawton. Lot twenty-one, block five, City of Lawton. Interested bidders? Going once, going twice, no bidders interested. Lot twenty-one, block five remains unsold. Next property is, um, City of Lawton, lot twenty-two, block five. Same price, five eighty-five, fifty-nine. Five eighty-five, fifty-nine, lot twenty-two, block five. Anybody interested in purchasing that property? Going once, going twice, last call. Property's unsold. And that concludes the properties in our foreclosure sale tonight. Want to thank all bidders for coming in? Please stop into the auditor's office before you leave. Motion to accept the, uh, bids submitted.
I would move to accept the bids submitted for the auction. Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the bids submitted. Do you have a discuss, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, bids are accepted.
Anything unsold carries over and is sold free to take up.
Okay. Any, anything unsold carries over and is available day-to-day?
Correct.
Yep. Need a motion to approve that?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second to, uh, all the other foreclosed properties that were unsold, continue on as day-to-day basis. Further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That concludes tonight's foreclosure sale. We'll continue on with the, uh, discussion on the drone upgrades, addition. Chris?
Chris, you want me to start over?
No.
Okay.
Anybody have any just questions for Chris?
Do these come with lithium batteries, or are they, your older ones are lithium too?
Yep.
No problems with them?
So far, so good.
Yeah, would be a projected longevity on a charge.
It all depends on how many discharges and recharges they have. Consumable, consumable product that hopefully we can last a long time.
But sure, Mike talked about the bid with not lasting so long.
Takes a lot of power to keep that bid in here. That's why we only wanna use that sparingly as best we can at times. And it's kind of the right tool for the toolbox and for the job.
And this is, this is the one that was in your budget.
Yep.
Life expectancy on something like this? Depends on your usage, I suppose. Okay.
I move to approve the purchase of the drone. Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the bid for the drone. Uh, thirteen thousand, seven seventy-five, thirty-seven, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Anything else, Chris? Thank you so much.
Sure.
Mr. Fieldson.
Yes.
How are you?
Good. How about you?
Good.
Uh, to start off, the water boards made a recommendation on the hydraulic study that they did on a, crossing the, Doug, did you look at it, at your township? Uh, their, their recommendation was to go with what was recommended in the hydraulic study, which had two options. One of which was to add one sixty-inch culvert to what was already there. And what was already there. And what was already there was pretty rusted out and shot, I guess, paved in. And the other option was to put three new sixty-inch culverts in. Now, we talked to the township, the clerk, Joe Peschek. And they had talked amongst themselves that they want to go with the new, three new sixty-inch culverts. At that sake. So cost of three culverts is twenty thousand, twenty thousand eight hundred. So I guess at this time, I'm just looking for a motion to accept the waterboard recommendation and order the three sixty-inch culverts.
Do they plan on raising that grade then too somewhere?
No.
No. There will still be, uh, Ohio Watermark.
This, this is, uh, this is location. Fancher Township.
Maybe I'll put it on the parcel, you know, it's always confusing. This is different than the Texas Crossing that we're talking about?
Yes, it is. So we've already made a recommendation on Texas Crossing. Believe this one is right here. If you can get zoomed in on it. Right, right here. So when I do back out again now, it's. This is where our culverts washed out. Wait now, let me get my bearings down here. This is where the culvert's been washed out. But it's a, uh, emergency leave site. This is actually down, down part of where the bridge went in. So those, this one, this crossing and this. This new one that we're talking about tonight are the same washout. Does that make sense? So the Texas Crossing would be over this direction farther. Like right here. We've already, already made a recommendation, already had done hydraulic study, already done that.
Yep.
This is kind of the one. Right here.
So is that a township or a county?
That's a very good question. We end up, we pay for the culverts either way. So, and then installation gets to be the question. Our policy says that it has to be inhabitable stream. So we're assuming that's what the county will work on putting it. What kind of it's up?
Don't, don't we pay anything above thirty-six, thirty-six?
Yeah, we, we, we will end up paying for the culverts either way.
Yep. But you're talking about installation would be.
Okay. So we're just gonna put these in. Next up, I'm gonna do all the other ones. To get away from the confusion in the argument.
Sure.
And I told the township that too.
Okay.
I'll move to all the waterboard recommendations for the three sixty-inch culverts.
Okay. We have a second. We have a motion in a second to go ahead and follow the waterboard's recommendation, three new sixty-inch culverts in Fancher Township. Further discussion?
So you said on top of the screen there, that's what we're coming for washed out? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
And that, so what are we putting, what are we putting in there? Are we just replacing what was there or?
Become, that's gonna decide with the other project. Yeah, we're, that's one of the sites of working process of hiring and engineer to design that and then federal, federal money will help pay for that one.
Okay.
So we're still in the process.
So when this washed out up here, probably because culverts were big enough or.
Big as well, yeah.
So this, so if we spend money down here, are we gonna have to do it again or are we gonna?
On the site you just made motion on?
Yeah.
Well, that, they did the hydraulic study on that.
And that, and that, the whole, that's all connected, so we're not tripping ourselves up.
Right, right.
Yeah, they, they have to assume on the channel that none of the other roads are restricting it.
Okay.
So just takes the area. Because if nothing else, it's anyway.
There may be, uh, issues on other crossings, but.
Right, but these two would be.
Right.
Yeah.
Would not have to go back and do something over there.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that a township line?
Uh, that's a good question. Oh, is it?
Nope.
No.
And that now it decides to ten-year them instead of a, kind of twenty-five to thirty.
Does that make sense to ours? We'd even bigger than that.
Yeah.
The one that was upstream.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the township line is a little twisted. I think it's in all the other sections.
Yeah, sure.
I think you gotta go east.
It'll right off just a little bit.
If you zoom out, it'll bring up township side, other lines. That should be up there.
This is section, it's in the middle of the section.
This is section thirty years.
Oh, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's in the middle along part of there. There's that.
There you go. So we have a motion and a second on the table to go ahead and approve those. We haven't voted on that yet that way, no. Further discussion, questions? Billy, you had something?
I was just gonna say if budget covers that because it's new.
I think it'll probably end up being in next year's budget.
Yeah. But there's enough money either way. Either, either that this year's budget or next year's budget. They all get built in time for next year's.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor is signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Okay, the next thing I have is our, our annual service maintenance certification. See how I wrote that on my agenda? Candy, I said sign, that's not.
That's what I was like.
We have to sign it.
Yeah.
So, um, every year we have this maintenance agreement that the state wants us to sign that we're maintaining our county major collector routes, our federally routes. So this is kind of the time of year that. Do you get that? Or accept this?
Nope.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I mean, it just says that, yeah, we are maintaining our federally highways. It looks like the state's attorney, the auditor, chairman, and myself have to sign it. We probably need a motion to have those four people sign it.
So.
Second.
Moving in second, we have the auditor, state's attorney, myself, or chairman, and Kevin signed the, uh.
Maintenance cert.
Ma- maintenance certification. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The last thing I have is, I don't know, have you guys, if you guys have heard about this flexible transportation fund program that the state is doing? They're asking everybody, the state, counties, townships, everyone for projects. But for like the township, we have to be the sponsor. We have to run the money through our coffers for the township. I had, I had one township put one in now, so just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. I don't know if they'll get approved on their, uh, grant, but if they do, they have to run it through us. Just bringing up the speed on that one, I think.
Okay.
I don't know, Paul, do you have anything?
I think Kevin Rutchett, see the last meeting and watched the recording earlier today, um, that the box culvert on county four, it's a five and a half south of that other crap that we were talking about, um, but they didn't get it paved this year because they put in gravel with their own cars, uh, paving it in each way. So that was enough to get, and they paid for the signs too, so we'll. They were able to get left out of the damage damages this year, but since they passed the completion date next spring, probably have two days of thirteen hundred dollars a day that the damage is stretched to that to get it paved, straightened and seeded. So, but it wasn't stopped. So ninety-four percent complete.
Looks good.
Yeah, but definitely to be a gentleman grading. We patched up the minor issues with the box seams and stuff like that. Had to do a little grounding, but turned out.
So that's all I have, unless, yep.
Questions?
Nope.
All right.
I have my, how's the hiring? I have three hires and I still have the positioning that was like filled. So I got the three blade operators filled.
Yeah.
And now it's not a crane and all three at the same time, but who, who is it?
Anything else? Any other questions for Kevin? If not, uh, thank you. Sheriff Lang?
Uh, just a couple things to bring up tonight. Uh, first is gonna be House Bill thirteen oh seven, which was in the back of Blue, uh, bill. It was a grant, uh, that was put out for us to apply for to get, uh, monies for bonuses, retention bonuses. So I applied for it and received seventeen thousand, thirty-three dollars for the sheriff's department. It's for sworn officers only. And it's basically, they left it up to the sheriffs how they want to disperse it. Uh, but it's been recommended right into the county commission. First I'd be, I, my proposal to you, because the money's gonna be run through the county to get paid out, uh, for individuals, so. At this time, when we would write the bonus tax, I'd be down to nine deputies as we were losing one to the highway patrol. Excuse me. So, I propose to give them a one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollar bonus. One-time bonus. And that would leave me with about one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars left. And I'm projecting, I got two positions to fill that are gonna be new positions, plus one that was just opening up. And I'd like to use six hundred and fifty dollars for each of those positions. We'll use your lawyers to give them a higher on bonus to help them with the moving costs and get them here. And that probably leave us with maybe about eight dollars left over. We can see that in some way.
So six, six hundred and fifty for recruitment?
Yep. So at, uh, the one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five, uh, gonna take, it'd be a fifteen thousand, seventy-five dollar payout. I think they're more than well and deserving. Uh, most of these guys and gals, um, have been working when we're short handed, the transports, when the jail was short, they were in there working in the jail, make sure that was staffed. We gave up a lot of time. And I'd like to hopefully see it come out before Christmas. I know we already got the money, so. That'd be my proposal. And I'm not quite sure how candy and them, gotta figure it out how it would run through, but we've talked about it, so I think she's got, got a plan.
Well, good. Appreciate you applying for it and appreciate all your deputies do. Thank you. And, uh, thank the legislature for going ahead and giving us this opportunity to thank our law enforcement personnel. So we need a motion to go ahead and accept Sheriff Lang's proposal on allocating the money from House Bill thirteen oh seven.
So.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the proposal from Sheriff Lang on, uh, bonuses or, um, retention bonuses and recruitment monies for his deputies. Further discussion?
I do got one. When they disperse this money, do they just divide by counties or number of employees that are working total?
When, when you apply, you have to put down a number of, of employees you got at that time. And they broke it over there by that. So we fell into, um, the ten or less, and they had a certain amount set aside for that. And then the next group, like PD had, has more, they fell into a different group. They give out so much per officer then.
But wasn't it depending on when you applied, there were like two different amounts? Wasn't that, that one being up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We worked on the low end, we worked on the high end, we were hovering in the middle.
Small department size, but.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? That, and just to clarify, so people know you're not, didn't apply for this for yourself.
No, I'm not taking any of it, this is going to the deputies.
Uh, I'll do the deputies, so.
Even though I am eligible for it, I'm not gonna take it.
Well, we appreciate your leadership. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And again, thank you, Sheriff. And thank your deputies for all they do. Radios?
Next thing I want to talk about is radio purchases. Uh, last crib meeting, uh, we got some information that they set a deadline now of March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. They have your radios purchased and in hand in order to get your reimbursement. Uh, with the last go around with radios, uh, I'm looking at the timeframe and I may have to adjust how many I buy in order to meet this, in order to get the reimbursement. Because for each radio we buy, we get fifteen hundred back. So, and. So I went and I've ordered two mobiles, two portables for the new cars that are coming that I'll be for my next year's budget. I ordered them because it took us about eight and a half, nine months to get the last ones. So, but looking at my budget, I would have enough money in this year's budget yet to pay for them radios. And that's what I would like to do. We've contacted the company because it's a straight bill from Motorola to see if they'll bill us out, because normally they don't bill until they ship it. So I can get a bid on this year's budget if you approve it. And then going into next year's budget, I could order four more portables, four more mobiles, and I got enough in my budget to cover that. four more portables, four more mobiles, and I got enough in my budget to cover that. And then I would have all the radios and portables that I would need to meet sire. And then I would be, I definitely make the timeline so I can get the reimbursements. I, I don't wanna miss out on reimbursements. You figure a fifteen hundred dollars radio between the portables and, and car radio, just an afford, that's six grand, whatever on in there. It's a good chunk of money that comes back to us and the county. I don't wanna miss out on it. So I guess I'm just looking for approval to take that route. Uh, the radios are all out of state bits, so it's gonna be about the same as it was with the ones I just bought. And I was just twenty-four or something, just shy of twenty-five thousand.
They don't give those things away, huh?
No, they do not.
Ouch.
If I may, put a few cents of two um. We, Brian and I have talked a lot about this, like it's such a roller coaster, when to wait, when not to wait, when to buy, and I think he's on the right path for this. Um, I ordered two radios and it's a possible build date, ten months.
Ten months.
Yeah, so at least it'll be closer to sometime next year. Crazy.
Yeah.
Absolutely crazy.
Mine was the deadline twenty-five.
It's March thirty-third, so you know. We're gonna get some information, send it out to the responders too, let them know when uh it's really start pushing. And of course, LEC cut over looking at twenty-six, so we might have some radios that have to sit, but as long as it's ordered and you get your bill stuff, you get your reimbursements, so before that deadline.
I would move, definitely move forward with the four radios for this year's budget. Is that what you said? Four?
I guess. I ordered two mobile, two portables already. I pay them out of this year's budget now. And the other was four portables for, and the mobiles will be have twenty-four budget.
Okay.
I would move to move forward with the sheriff's request. Second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead with the request from Sheriff Lang for the radios purchase to this year, for next year. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Radios are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Sheriff?
Uh, I'm just gonna send in some reimbursement for the last radios, so that'd be about six, uh, six thousand. Waiting for DOJ to cut the grant back to the county. We got reimbursed basically for one vest. Low proof vest that I applied for. Other than that, we just need three more employees by the first year and we'll be good again.
Anybody have anything for the sheriff? Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Hello, everyone. I am requesting oh yeah, no S there. Um, I'm requesting out of state travel um in the end of February and first day of March. I applied to a program through the National Computer Forensic Institute. It is a nationwide um training course for prosecutors to help prosecutors better understand digital evidence, cyber crimes, how, you know, thefts and digital thefts work, currency crimes, and also um teach you how to anticipate and understand child pornography cases. So out of the nation, they select like a hundred prosecutors and I was selected. Everything is paid for, all the flights, all the meals, all the lodging. I just need approval to go, so if there's.
Where is it?
It is in Hoover, Alabama, and I am very thankful that I'm going in February and not August.
Well, congratulations for being accepted.
Well, thank you. It, you know, it's, it's good for all of us and digital evidence is, there's only one way it's going, and it's getting bigger. Crimes are getting more sophisticated and I'm sure the sheriff could tell you from his current gig or his BCI gig, there's so much wrapped up in these phones that and knowing how to speak that language and understand where you're looking at is so important, so. It'll be February twenty-sixth through March first. Like I indicated, all travel is covered and um hotel arrangements will be covered as well.
Thanks. Congratulations. We have a motion, we have a second. Go ahead and approve. The state's attorney attended the national. I'm not even sure what it's called, but.
Digital evidence.
Digital evidence. In Hoover, Alabama. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
I do have a question for Bo. How's your assistant?
She's awesome. She has really come so far along even since August when she got up there full time. She has really just taken the bull by the horns and excited to learn and roll up her sleeves and uh her and Sheriff Lang are good buddies because they sat next to each other through a jury trial in her first week. And honestly, I, I couldn't ask for a better assistant. I think it's great. We also, we also extended an offer to um another attorney in town to replace Moran. He accepted and he'll be starting after the first week, so. We're really excited about that too. She's gonna be a great add to our team.
Megan is certainly a smart plug in. Um, she's good for that office, so. Anything else? Not for that?
Not, not related to out of state travel.
Okay. Uh, unfinished business, discussion of floodplain administration and FEMA letter. Left messages with Mr. Briney, Beiny, Burney, Burney um with FEMA. But I did talk to Tyler Spomer from Department of Water Resources, the national flood insurance coordinator for the state. And uh, he said he's gonna reach out with Thomas. He's, he knows that he's out this week. They plan on coming to the state sometime next month. Not sure if they'll have time for us, but he's gonna run that past him. And uh, there is currently a legislative study going on on flood insurance and so the interim uh runs through the Nat Agricultural and Natural Resource Committee. The interim committee is uh meeting again on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth. And uh, they are talking about um zoning, planning, building, floodplain administration purposes. Um, they will have a presentation next Tuesday from Mr. Aaron Burst, executive director of the Association of Counties regarding the county's role in tracking and updating land use authority for NFIP purposes. And that's at ten thirty-five um next Tuesday and eleven oh five. They have a Township Officer Association and the purposes of township's role and updating land use authorities for NFIP purposes, so. Uh, you don't have to go down to Bismarck, you can log in and watch that all happening live on uh their TVs, computers, telephones, what have you. But just so you know that we haven't forgotten about the process and uh uh Agriculture and Natural Resource Committee. Yeah.
You have that by the graph here. Personal ledger?
Yeah, it's just legislature.gov or nd.gov. Legis dot nd.gov. Click on videos or calendar and it'll take you to that. I can send you that link to that if you're interested. We'll do that. Thank you. As we continue to have questions and uh if we don't hear back or hear back in a timely manner, Senator Holman did say I'd reach out to him and he would be happy to come up and facilitate the meeting if need be. So, it's always good to have friends in high places, so. And he said he loves coming to our community, so even if it is in January or February, but so you'll uh may have to take him up on the outlook if you don't hear back. LEC JPA.
Yes.
And deeds.
I have some movement on this stuff. As far as I am aware, um Swanson and Workup completed their title review process. They went through and did a title opinion on the LEC and um you know, what they they just wanted to be doubly extra sure that the LEC was getting the appropriate interests. We found through that process that we had originally thought there was three parcels. It was determined that there are actually four, it was completely enclosed, like parking lot, square in one corner. It doesn't make any difference, it's just technically it's a fourth parcel. John Workup did the title review because Howard represents LEC. They didn't want any questions about if it was on the up and up. And then they sent us deeds. Um, the deeds themselves look correct with one little asterix. The address is listed as two 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 Walnut Street West for all of the properties, which is sort of correct, but also not correct because that is posted as the address for all of the four properties. But like if you were to look at the postal services maps, the ones across the street would have, you know, it would be two two four or whatever. So, I don't know that the deeds need to be changed. I think that they could be approved as is. One parcel is owned outright by the city, one parcel is owned outright by us. And then I believe the other two are held with both of us. So we would need three signatures. Is that your understanding of the situation, Jeff?
Yeah.
I miss anything?
No.
So that's the deed portion and the LEC would pay us one dollar of consideration for each property that we're conveying. So it's three dollars for Candie's coffers.
And would they take care of the filing and?
LEC would pay the filing fees, the closing costs. I mean, it's, it's not expressly
Stated anywhere?
Stated anywhere, but, but the understanding that Jack and I have with Howard is that because the LEC asked for this title opinion and all of this extra process and work, that they would pay the closing costs. And it's kind of splitting hairs anyway because it's all our money anyway, so. But that portion would be done, I believe, that Howard's still had some concerns about the JPA. I know that he has been directed by both Jack and I to approach the LEC board and explain his position. I don't know if he's done that recently. But I, from where I sit, I still think that we are good to go, right, as far as that's concerned. So whenever the time comes, we should be able to get this all wrapped up, so. And I think Jack has kind of same view and I don't want there to be any mistake. I do appreciate Howard for being thorough. I think sometimes he gets a bad rap for slowing things down, but it's worth noting that because he was thorough, we found out that there was this fourth parcel, right? So, I gotta give him kudos. Any questions for me about the deeds?
You need a motion to
Motion.
Continue on it, does it work?
Yeah, I, I think a motion to sign the three deeds would be appropriate. And probably roll call just to make sure everything's documented on the up and up.
Sure. Only portion that we sign the deeds for the transfer of ownership, is that all?
Sign the warranty deeds for the LEC? Sorry, I'm not trying to.
I will second that.
Been moved in second, then we go ahead and sign the warranty deeds for the transfer of property. Any further discussion? You know, I've thought about this and trying to find downsides to it, and I just I can't find downsides. I, I think this is what that entity needs to move forward and what we all need to move that in the right direction and let that board hopefully stand on their own and, you know, hopefully it it doesn't come back and harm the county in any way. I don't see how that it could, but um I think it's a good, good move forward, so. With that, uh, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Will Hummy?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Oh, he's not here. Brett?
Aye.
Sorry.
Motion carried.
I had to make sure I covered it all.
So, awesome.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you. And thank you and and your staff. You know, Megan put some time into that as well and her insight was valuable, so.
Yeah, she has a unique perspective on the whole thing being new.
Yep. Yep. So with that, I think, uh, working out those minor details that, um, I kind of, when, when Howard met with the LEC board, I relayed our concerns and I'm not sure if he got those rectified or if they're inworkable, but it was really minor berrage, I thought, um, that was being left for.
And I, I thought we had already incorporated all those changes because I remember going and standing at the front of the room there.
Yep.
And going through line by line with you guys and saying, here's what we think.
And, and that's what we approved from Ramsey County, we approved that.
Right.
So the, the Christmas tree version, as you called it.
Yep.
And, uh, so we have a motion in play to go ahead and approve that. It's just a matter of now the LEC board.
Got to sign off.
Got to sign off on it and the other counties, I believe they've all, um, either signed off on it or in the process of, um, you, you know, I think Benson County was the first to get on board with that and sign off on that, um, joint powers agreement. And so now it's just a matter of the LEC board doing the same thing and, um, so unfortunately that may not happen until December, uh, cause we've already met for November. But, um, you know, maybe some time to, and for Mr. Swanson to address his concerns and bring those up and we could either address his concerns at our first meeting in December. Um, but I think we've already, uh, since we've already approved that, I don't know if there'd be necessary for those changes or any of his.
I don't think so. I, I think he continues to be concerned about that, uh, operating loan. Um, LEC board can secure an operating loan. He's, he and I have a different view of the law on that.
Yeah.
Um, he seems to think that they can't go out on the loan. I seen, I think they can. Um, so that is gonna need to be, we're gonna have to come to an understanding there somehow. But that's for the board and the counties to decide how they want it to go. I believe we included that language because we're tired of the deficit spending and then getting a bill for two hundred thousand dollars. Is that, that's what I recall and I specifically recall, you know, Lee and, and Jeff and this kind of half of the table being concerned about that. That sound right?
But.
I mean, I know we're all concerned about it.
And developing a budget and sticking with it.
Exactly, that's what I mean.
You know, having those daily rates set prior to going into budget season with the, you know, understanding that, hey, you know, they're probably gonna budget high because I don't know if we've met that this year going forward with the numbers that they've had. Um, have we exceeded that? And last year, I don't know if we did because, you know, they, they have Ramsey County pegged at a, a high number and, and thankfully, knock on wood that, you know, people are behaving themselves and Bo is not putting people in the huskow and running up the, the cost there, but I think they always budget conservatively and, um, you know, fortunately, we don't haven't exceeded that recently, but it's been in those years that when we did, I, I think, and, and that's where we had those differences of opinions, I think, so, you
And not, not that one's better than the other, it's just like different views on it, I guess.
Yeah. So with that, uh, nothing else for the LEC or the JPA?
Um, no, not at this time.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for the, okay? New business, approval of the homestead credit. We have two of them.
I will.
Motion to approve the homestead credit.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the homestead credits. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, raffle permits, we have two of those within our packets. Discussion on the raffle permits.
I will move to approve the raffle permits.
Second.
Motion in a second to go ahead and approve the raffle permits. Trying to pull those up here. One is for the Lake Region Community Fund. And. For the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local fourteen twenty-six. All right. Hearing no other discussion, for, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, approval of the proclamation for Lake Region Public Library Day. We have a proclamation that was submitted by Lake Region Public Library Chairman and librarian, uh, Matty Cummings. And the proclamation, whereas the Devil's Valley Carnegie Library in Devils Lake, North Dakota served with the community members for ninety-three years and whereas in the spring of nineteen ninety-two, interest and willingness to execute the building of a new, fully accessible public library began. And whereas a total of one point one million dollars was raised, with seventy percent received in private donations and city Devils Lake sales tax providing the remaining balance of funds. And whereas in the spring of two thousand two, construction began on a nine thousand three, thirty-three square foot public library facility. Lake Region Public Library opened its doors for service in December of two thousand three. Whereas over the years, the library's holdings have grown to over forty-three thousand items. Whereas since its establishment, Lake Region Public Library patrons have checked out an estimated one hundred thousand items. And whereas the Devil's Lake Region Public Library has consistently provided quality library services to the citizens of Devils Lake and Ramsey County for the past twenty years. Now therefore Ramsey County hereby proclaim Sunday, December third, twenty twenty-three as Lake Region Public Library Day. All county residents would join me in extending a sincere congratulations and gratitude to Lake Region Public Library for enriching the lives of the Ramsey County citizens by providing a variety of intellectual, educational, recreational and cultural resources for the past twenty years. Proclaim this twenty-first day of November, twenty twenty-three. We have a motion to go ahead and approve the proclamation for Lake Region Public Library Day.
So if you sign it, I can bring it up.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Go ahead and proclaim December second or no, December third, twenty twenty-three as Lake Region Public Library Day. Further discussion? If not, it gives me great pleasure to declare that past and, uh, I'll go ahead and sign that. Is there a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you for keeping me on my toes.
The parliamentarian.
Uh, additional further business? Uh, one quick thing is as we approach the holiday season and, uh, the Ramsey County courthouse will be closed, uh, for Thanksgiving and, uh, the day following. That's been an ongoing tradition here for the, all past twenty twenty-five years. Um, and, uh, I want to thank our employees, uh, certainly thankful for all that they do to the citizens of Ramsey County and, uh, looking forward to working with the commission to setting up an employee appreciation breakfast sometime soon. Um, not sure when that will be, but we'll get together and come up with a day, date that works for everybody and, uh, works in everybody's calendar. And last year, I think it was on the twenty-ninth of November, uh, that's coming up really soon. So I don't think that will work. We need to get a little bit of notice for everybody to get involved and, uh, figure out what we can do as commissioners to show our appreciation to our employees within the county, so keep that in mind. And if we have any ideas, please share them with me and we'll, uh, work with the department heads and, um, HR director, uh, Brian Singer to bring that idea, idea forward. Um, with that, I have nothing further. Anybody else? Any announcements?
What, what is Matty's, um, make a charitable donation to sponsor?
Oh, yeah.
Five dollar.
No, no, I don't know the whole of it, um, but the, the library, because they're coming up on their anniversary here, they're doing a fundraiser where you can sponsor a book in their collection and it puts your name like in the front cover. It's like, I can't, I can't remember the dollar amount, but it's like this book.
Five dollars.
Five.
I remember five bucks.
But it would be like, for example, this book sponsored by the Ramsey County Commission or, or whatever the, I don't know the actual language.
I have five, I have, it's not there anymore.
So consider donating to the library.
You know, we've said that if this book was sponsored by.
So.
Wonderful.
My wife would like that. Just, I think it's a creative idea.
Very creative.
December first, I believe, was the deadline.
There. Coming up.
Yeah. About that prior.
With that, I wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.